Welcome to tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting. First order of business will be the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. If you will all please rise for the invocation and please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Tonight's invocation will be given by Dr. Ed Glaze, who is the senior pastor at Fairhope United Methodist Church.
Thank you. Let us pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, we come before you now humbly seeking your wisdom, as you have promised to give us wisdom, as we submit to you and open our hearts and minds to your guidance. We pray for these leaders of our city. We pray that you would direct them in the business that they are about to conduct. May they be open to the leadings of your spirit, and may each person here humbly know that before you, God, we're just sinners in need of your grace. May we, with such an attitude, speak to each other and listen to one another, so that somehow, some way, we can hear your voice spoken through the voice of the people that you bring into our lives. Thank you for this city. Thank you for the blessings you pour into this wonderful community. Continue, God, to direct us, so that this town can fulfill the destiny that you've set before us. We ask this in the name of Christ our Lord. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Glaze. Okay, council, a little work before we get started into the agenda. There was mention of adding the resolution to allow the low-impact events, the filming events, to occur on, let's see, I'm not sure those dates are right, April the 30th, it should have been April 30th and May 1st, I believe, was the first one. Is that right?
Yes.
Cheryl? I believe it was April 30th and May 1st. Shirley, is that right? April 30th to May 1st was the first one, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, council, we'll read that resolution. If you would, we will, I'll entertain a motion in just a moment to amend the agenda. Also, clerk handed out another resolution. There were some laptops that we approved purchase of in recent meeting, and the buying group contract that those were available through has expired. And there is another buying group contract that is valid, that we can go through. The price is exactly the same. So, staff is asking that we go ahead and approve the purchase through the new buying contract. Do we have to rescind the prior resolution? Okay.
It says amend it.
Is that, okay, so it's adopted, the resolution, so it's-
It's amending it.
Amending the former resolution. Okay. All right. So, council, with that, I will entertain a motion to amend the agenda to add the resolution for the low-impact film productions, and then also for the purchase of the laptop computers, the amendment to that resolution.
Some move.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second to amend the agenda, as stated. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Say nay, if you're opposed. Okay, motion passes. So, that will be item 19 will be the film resolution, I'll call it. And then item 20 would be the amended resolution for the laptop purchases. Okay, thank you, council. Okay, next order of business is to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting. The work session and agenda meetings held on April the night. Council, do you have any additions, deletions, or changes to those minutes? Okay. Hearing none. All of us in favor of accepting those minutes as submitted, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, those minutes are approved.
I have a motion and a second.
Did I get a motion and a second?
No.
I don't think so.
I make a motion, we approve the minute.
Trying to shorten the meeting up some. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Did I hear a second?
You did hear it.
Yes.
Okay, all right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you, clerk. Keep me straight. Mayor Wilson, your report.
Thank you, council president. I want to invite everyone here to join us on Thursday at 3:00 PM at the NIC Center for the State of the City address. This will be livestreamed and available to watch at your convenience if you're unable to attend. We will be presenting a video with the highlights and share more of the details with a summary report, which will be available on our website afterwards. You will also receive an infograph in your utility bill going over by the numbers report. As we move to better manage our fleet, I'm happy to report we've sold $50,000 worth of surplus equipment and vehicles. That money all goes back to the departments where the equipment was used to help budget new capital purchases. Our fuel dock is moving forward at Fairhope docks. Pictured here is the fuel tank slab support bulkhead. The projected completion date is this Friday, and then the framing of the concrete slab will begin. I want to congratulate Tamas Qatar, our tennis pro. Thanks to his efforts, the Fairhope tennis facility is gaining a stellar reputation. Tamas succeeded in relocating a major tennis tournament recently to our facility as a result of our better managed and maintained facility. Tamas held five tournaments last year, and this year he is on track to doubling that Storm drain medallions were installed Friday before Earth Day celebrations on Saturday. Led by our economic and community development department, we conducted an educational program at our schools about how our storm drains operate. Soon you will see a beautiful artwork by all of our storm drains in Fairhope, designed by three of our Fairhope High School students, to bring about public awareness. Only rain goes down the drain. Thanks in part by all the publicity from this installation, the city received media coverage every 30 minutes on Friday, which also helped promote this year's Earth Day. People were eager to get their hands on the T-shirts. That fifth grader, let me see her name, Kaylee Rogers, from the intermediate school, she won the design for the T-shirts and the recycled bags. It's precious. Awareness and care for our environment was put center stage this past weekend. People showed up in record numbers. I want to thank everyone who participated to make Earth Day Mobile Bay the greatest success yet. We are gearing up for the Restore Act planning. We are asking council members to join us on the various committees we will be forming to start the work needed to implement the four projects for which we want restore funding. The funding should be made available to us, hopefully towards the end of the year, beginning of next year, and we need to be ready. I also just learned in our last Restore Council meeting last week that we will receive an additional 3% of our budget to help offset the cost of planning and administration efforts, equalling $534,000 in addition to the $17.8 million our city will be receiving for all of these projects. I'd like to give our city clerk, Lisa Hanks, a proclamation for the Municipal Clerks Week. No one can imagine the incredible responsibility Lisa has every day, and what a vital role she plays in the smooth running of our local government. She has been nominated four times for Clerk of the Year from District 8 of the Alabama Association of Municipal Clerks and Administrators, which consists of Baldwin, Mobile, Escambia, and Washington Counties in 2012, 13, 15, and this year. There are 14 statewide districts. Lisa was named Clerk of the Year in 2015, has served as President, Vice President, Secretary, and Treasurer for the AAMCA, and served District 8 as President twice and Vice President, all in her spare time as our city clerk. Lisa, I'm so proud to present this Municipal Clerk Week proclamation to you. And I was told to get the mic from down there, but I'm just going to read it from here and hand it to you. Whereas, the office of the municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists through the world, throughout the world, and is the oldest office among public servants. I did not know that. Whereas, the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between citizens, the government bodies and agencies of government of all levels. Whereas, municipal clerks have pledged to be very mindful of their neutrality and impartiality rendering equal service to all. Now therefore, I Karen Wilson, Mayor of City of Fairhope, do recognize the week of May 6th through the 12th as Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk Lisa Hanks and all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Thank you, Lisa. Jay? And now I want to, I'm happy to have Lori Dubose join us today with Fairhope First, and I would like for Erin Langley to please come to the front.
Thank you, mayor. Fairhope First was incorporated in 1987 as a nonprofit organization that was originally created to help the city identify eligible voters in municipal elections. It started because of a conversation with resident Dick Sanderson and Evelyn Phillips, then the Fairhope City Clerk. Over the years, Fairhope First continued to support the City of Fairhope, hosting the State of the City address and designating a Quality of Life Award winner. The first Quality of Life Award was given in 1988 to recognize outstanding contributions towards enhancing the quality of life in Fairhope. In fact, the mayor and her sister have actually won this award. Do you remember what year?
I don't remember what year.
I think it was 2008.
Yes.
Thank you, Lori, for giving us a little bit of the history, because they've been around a long time and have been really recognizing some amazing talent in our community, and these people who really spend a great deal of their life enhancing our quality of life in our community. Erin Langley is the chosen person for 2018. She is the executive director and the artistic director of the Eastern Shore Repertory Theater. She is a former third grade teacher in the Baldwin County Public School System and a graduate of Spring Hill College. She has served as artist in residence at several Baldwin County Schools and at Church of the Apostles. Erin loves using theater whenever she goes, whenever she goes, and has developed reading theater residencies for struggling elementary age readers, and has even directed a show at a school in Haiti, in French. In her spare time, she enjoys tinkering in the recording studio and spending time with her wonderful family, Carl, Ezra, Zoe, and June, their crazy boxer. So, please, let's give a round of applause to our- [applause] Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Congratulations. Thank you, it's an honor. Oh, Lori. [laughing] And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. Next item on tonight's agenda is public participation. This would be pertaining to agenda items only. Please keep in mind that items five and six are public hearings, and so if you want to speak to items five or six, I'd ask you to wait until such time as we have those public hearings. So, if you would like to speak to items seven through 20 with the two added items to tonight's agenda, if you'd please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing no one, I will close public participation for agenda items, and reminded that you will have an opportunity to address the council on other matters during the public participation at the end of tonight's meeting. Council comments. Councilman Robinson.
I don't have any comment tonight.
Okay, very good.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Councilman Brown?
Thank you, council president. I'd like to remind everybody, Ms. Langley was up here tonight. If you've not been to Theater on the Bluff, I would highly encourage taking the family out there. It is a true asset to Fairhope. That is next Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night. Newsies, you see the banners hanging around town, but if you have not been, I encourage you to go. You will not be disappointed. Also, would like to congratulate Ms. Lauren Burrell for being named the 2018 Prom Queen, Saturday night at Fairhope High School Prom. Way to go, Lauren, very deserving. I would also like to mention I'm going to recuse myself from item number 10 on the vote, however, I will discuss it during comments. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Brown. Councilman Boone?
Yeah, I only have one thing, as far as, y'all missed the Eagle Bash, the Bald Eagle Bash they had down at the Fish River. I forgot the name of the-
Weeks Bay.
Weeks Bay, thank you. The Weeks Bay area down there, you really missed a good time, and I would highly recommend making plans for next year's event, and bring your feeding basket with you, because they got every form of shrimp you ever want down there. And don't tell my wife I ate any. But next year, y'all make plans of coming down there, because it's really a good event for a great cause. That's all I got.
Okay. I don't have any city business to discuss under comments, but I will, I do want to thank Councilman Brown for the congratulations to my daughter. And I don't talk about family much from the dais, but if you knew my daughter and how sweet she was, I'm very proud of her. So, Lauren, shout out to you. I get choked up. Congratulations, sweetheart. Very proud of her. And with that, I'll close council comments and move to item five on tonight's agenda, which is a public hearing. This is amending zoning ordinance number 1253, Article 3, Section D9, accessory dwelling units, amending to allow units with kitchens to make a bona fide dwelling unit subject to locational requirements. Would somebody like to introduce the ordinance, please?
I'll introduce it.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Robinson. Mr. Dias?
Thank you, council president. This is, again, an amendment to the zoning ordinance dealing with accessory dwellings. As you can see from the staff report or the memo we produced, right now, the only time you can have a real accessory dwelling is under the roof of a principal of a home. And what we are requesting is for us to alter that slightly. As you can see from your memo, right now, for an accessory dwelling, you cannot have a full bath or a kitchen. So, it's really more of an accessory structure more than anything else. And so, we're asking that be modified to allow for an accessory dwelling. I do want to point out, it's very important to note that accessory dwellings are listed in our table of permitted uses, and they are only allowed, accessory dwellings are only allowed in the commercial districts. So, it's B1, B2, B3A, B3B, B4, and then also some of the village districts. So, this does not apply to the typical districts that are residential at this point in time. That is something we want to talk about later. We felt like this was a first step in that direction of talking about accessory dwellings. But again, you know, we're talking about some very slight changes currently. Also, there's a five-foot setback on the side, a 10-foot separation between the principal structure and an accessory dwelling. So, from that perspective, you know, there are measures in place to control where they're placed. They can only occupy 25% of the rear yard. That's in the current ordinance. We're not changing that at all. Again, the primary change that we're requesting is, again, to allow for a true accessory dwelling. Be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Dias, I heard you mention that it would allow kitchens, and I'm still scanning through this, and I didn't say, I didn't hear you say, is it going to allow a bathroom, a full bath as well, or only the kitchen?
Both full bath and kitchen. Right now, it does not allow that, and so really, it's more of an accessory structure. I don't think you can call it dwelling, because to be a dwelling, you've got to have a kitchen and a bath to be considered a dwelling under our ordinance. And so, what we're requesting is that to be altered to allow, again, for it to be a bona fide, a full-fledged accessory dwelling. Again, I do want to point out that the use table, they're only allowed currently in B1, B2, B3, B2, and so forth, only in the commercial and business districts, and does not, will not be in R1A or things like that. The only way you can have it in R1A in the districts that are residential is, again, if it's under roof in a bona fide dwelling.
So, when you say R, is it the R1, R2, R3, R3A?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, in the current-
Not allowed.
Yes, sir, the current ordinance, and I pulled it before I came tonight, I pulled the use table, and it's very clear where they're allowed and where they're not allowed.
Okay. Council, any questions for Mr. Dias before we open up the public hearing?
I got one question. Looking at the site requirements, it says any utilities for an accessory structure shall run through the principal structure. What's the reason for that, Wayne?
I think to really try to control, have some limitations on the rental of these. So, if it's going for the principal dwelling, we do have one owner who's getting the, you know, who's controlling it, so it can't be sold or anything like that. And this was written some time ago, this went to the planning commission back in 17. But I think from that perspective, I think it's really meant to sort of, again, have some measure of control how it's being utilized.
You have questions, Mr. Dias? Okay. Mr. Dias, you might want to sit in the front row in case we have further questions. I'll now open up the public hearing. If you'd like to be heard on this matter, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Okay, I see no one. I will now close the public hearing. Council, unless I hear of further requests or action from you, this will lay over until the next regularly scheduled city council meeting. Move on to item six. Item six is a public hearing, amending zoning ordinance number 1253. This is the request to amend ordinance number 1142, known as the Greeno Professional Village Plan Unit Development, to allow the building orientation, parking area and orientation in 25-foot-tall light poles reflected in this site plan approval request, SR 17.03. This property of Community Bank, National Association, generally located at 200 North Greeno Road, Fairhope, Alabama.
And council president and council members, you will see a site plan review related to the same Community Bank project on Lot 1 of the Greeno Professional Village. You'll see that on a future council meeting.
Let me stop you just a minute. Counsel, can I have someone introduce the ordinance?
I'm sorry, sir.
That's all right.
I'll introduce it.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Robinson.
I'm sorry, sir.
Proceed, no problem.
You will see a site plan review at a future city council meeting. We're here today for a PUD amendment. The PUD amendment is necessary because during the process of reviewing the site plan review, discovered the orientation of the building to fit Lot 1 would not mirror that of the exhibit of the original PUD ordinance when the Greeno Professional Village was created. This item and the exhibit that's included in your packet would reconcile that situation by amending this PUD. In addition, during the process of reviewing the site plan review, the applicant expressed interest and request to staff that we consider allowing taller light fixtures, taller light poles on the site. The PUD ordinance clearly governs what is allowed for the site, and it is more fully described in your packet, but essentially, they wanted 25-foot-tall light poles, eight-foot or no taller than the shadow box fence along the existing PUD is what is required. During the planning commission meeting, the applicant acknowledged the desire remains for that, but they are agreeable to allowing those to remain the same. So, as a result, the staff recommendation, staff recommendation, both of staff and the planning commission, is that the rezoning be approved, and then the, there is one condition of approval, which is the light standards shall be no taller than the fence to be constructed at the rear of the property line. The original lighting requirements of ordinance 1142, which is the original ordinance that created this PUD, shall remain in effect.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to speak to this matter, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Council hearing, barring any further action to be taken by you, we will let this lay over until the next regularly scheduled city council meeting. Thank you. Item seven is a final adoption of an ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance number 590 to protect the public health, safety, and welfare by providing policy and procedure for park beach entrance fees at Fairhope's bayfront within the City of Fairhope. Counsel, I had someone from the treasurer's office approach me between the work session and the council meeting, and I believe what we're proposing are the fees would be applicable to non-residents. They told me that the way it's been done in the past is that people who are citizens get one sticker, which allows them access to the park, and also allows them access to the city landfill. And if you get another sticker, which I didn't know existed, maybe because I'm a citizen, if you are a Fairhope Utilities customer, you are given access to the beachfront park, but not the city landfill. So, I guess the question would be, if we adopt the ordinance as written, it would eliminate those, I believe, and I'm not certain, we might have to get the attorneys to look at this, would it eliminate those that have been granted access in the past through being utilities customers, or would it not? And then the second question would be that if we do raise the fees and leave everything else the same, does that mean we have to change the way in which this ordinance was advertised and introduced? And it may be enough of a material change that we would have to pretty much start over with this. So, and I, counsel, I know I'm throwing that on you, and I don't know if you can even answer that question right now.
I don't know.
And clerk, I don't know that you can answer that question right now.
Well, it wasn't actually published in the newspaper. It has been just in the agenda packet.
Okay. So, that would mean that the portion of the advertising, does that mean, would we have to reintroduce it tonight? Could we reintroduce it with those minor, with a change if necessary, or even if it's just a clarification?
Yes, you'd need to reintroduce it and then vote for final adoption after immediate consideration.
So, counsel, I'm looking for some commentary on whether you want to keep it the way it's been traditionally. We could put that in writing, that way there's no question, or do you want to adopt the ordinance as it was introduced, or do you want to reintroduce it and let it lay over until the next meeting?
I say follow the existing policy we have, you know, with the stickers, you know, if you're paying Fairhope Utilities, that gets you access to the beach.
Okay.
Now, would we like to change our stickers?
Well, I don't, I don't, I agree with you. We won't have to change, it's two stickers. Councilman Brown, I just want to make sure that there's, you know, I want to make sure that we're clear in this ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, I think the intent, if I understand it correctly, was that the only thing that would change with the way this is done is the fees that are collected for non-residents. Everybody that's had access before would continue to have access, and nothing, we wouldn't be changing who had free access and who didn't.
Right.
We would only be charging differently those that did not already have free access.
Those that were paying have to pay more.
Look at Councilman Robinson, or any councilman, if I can ask you, including Mr. McDowell, if you will look at Section 2 of the ordinance, as it's written, it says a City of Fairhope resident is allowed free access, however must present the park beach access decal on the vehicle. I think to eliminate any question, it should say a City of Fairhope resident or City of Fairhope Utility customer is allowed access. I think that that one phrase would clarify that.
Yeah, but I mean, is that even necessary?
Those that were paying have to pay more. Look at Councilman Robinson, or an odd councilman, if I can ask you, including Mr. McDowell, if you will look at section two of the ordinance, as it's written, it says, "A City of Fairhope resident is allowed free access, however must present the park beach access decal on the vehicle." I think to eliminate any question, it should say, "A City of Fairhope resident or City of Fairhope utility customer is allowed access." I think that that one phrase would clarify that.
Yeah, but I mean, is that even necessary? Because they, it just says, "A City of Fairhope resident," it doesn't say, I mean, if, whether you live in the city or outside the city, you are still a City of Fairhope resident, and you would only have that decal if you have a utility bill, correct?
Well, no, there's two of them.
Our gas utility goes all the way to Spanish Fort.
There you go.
So people that live in Baymanet, they get city, have free beach access?
Many water customers, you know, well outside the city limits as well.
All right, so let me just.
So to keep it the way it is.
So we've got people that live in Spanish Fort and in wherever that get free beach access because they have Fairhope utilities, but there are people that live in the City of Fairhope but outside the municipal limits that don't get free access.
May or may not.
May or may not.
May or may not.
That seems unfair.
If you keep it the way it is, I think if you add the phrase, "City of Fairhope resident or utility customer is allowed free access," that would clarify it and keep it the way it is right now. Then you're going to have to.
Another sticker.
I mean, I, my personal thought is, I don't know that there's a rush to this. I mean, I'd rather it be done fairly than quickly.
We can keep it the way it is now, City of Fairhope residents.
Yeah, but I don't, I personally don't like the idea of people who live outside the city getting access to it when people that live in the 365-32 area code not getting free access to it, whether you have utilities or not. Yeah, I mean, I just, I mean, if we're going to allow people that have Fairhope utilities to go there for free, I think we should allow people that live in the City of Fairhope, whether it's in the municipal limits or not, I think. If you live in the City of Fairhope, we can either, I think the fair thing would be two things. We either limit it to only those who live in the voting limits of the City of Fairhope, or we extend it to everybody that lives in the City of Fairhope, whether that's inside or outside. That'd be my, I think, I think to allow.
Then we can do, we can, we can see where the counsel is on that right now with the way it's presented as being a resident, and I will ask for a motion for final adoption.
Can I interject? One thing that our planning director just said was our map viewer actually can tell you who is in and out of the police jurisdiction or any, you know, the city limits. But the other thing is, the taxpayers within the city limits are the ones that are, you know, paying for the upkeep of the beach, just a consideration.
Sure.
So those are two things.
Yep, we got it.
Just keep them up, okay.
Yeah, and I've got no issue with limiting it to those of the taxpayers. My issue is, the way I think it's currently written, the way I understand it, is it's limiting it to those people, but including people that live outside of the City of Fairhope if they have Fairhope utilities.
No, no, the way it's written is doesn't allow them.
Okay, well then, just forget the last five minutes of me talking then.
I think that historically, they've been given access if they have utilities, but the way this is written, they do not.
Yeah, I mean.
So just a person with a dual sticker would get in?
Just, it'd be one. Once those current stickers expire, you have to be a citizen to get it, you have to be an elector or qualified elector. Okay, I will entertain a motion for final adoption.
So moved.
Have a motion for final adoption. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, will you call a question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Settles that for now, and we'll monitor it. Okay, item eight is a resolution that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Mott McDonald LLC for RFQ number PS 017-17, professional engineering services for stormwater outfall study with a not-to-exceed amount of $22,500. I thought that Mr. Johnson did a great job in the work session of explaining that this would establish a baseline for the Tatumville Gully, and that way we could see potential or predicted impacts of development along that. Does anybody have any further questions for Mr. Johnson? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Prove this resolution.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second. Any final comments or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number nine, I'm going to need a sucret for this one. Resolution that city council approves the selection of the following professional engineering services for RFQ number PS-014-18, multiple wastewater collection and transmission system improvements, and hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to negotiate the fee schedule. Project one is the Church Street Outfall Transmission System with Sawgrass Consulting. Project two is the Briar Drive, Fairwood Boulevard and Fairhope Avenue Transmission System with Dewberry Preble Rish. Project three is GIS mapping for asset management and modeling capability with Volker. Project four is a Fells Avenue Lift Station Rehab with Goodwin Mills and Kaywood. Project five is the Grand Hotel Lift Station Assessment and Collection System Evaluation with Hutchison, Moore, and Roush. I'll entertain a motion to approve these selections.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? I think that Mr. Peterson did an equally good job of explaining these in the work session. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of these selections, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Councilman Brown, I do need to inform you that if you plan to abstain from voting on item 10, you cannot speak to item 10.
Very well.
Okay. All right. Item 10 is a resolution that the city council hereby approves and authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to execute a memorandum of understanding between the City of Fairhope and Portico Fairhope LLC for the Fairhope Avenue Drainage Improvements Project. This is a public-private partnership, subject to final approval by the city attorney, and that the city council appropriates $97,321.80 from the already budgeted capital projects funds, which has $300,000 budgeted for drainage improvements. Mr. McDaniel, I believe you said that you had some proposed modifications to this.
Richard, can you come up here? There's some issues about having some bids and value engineering on some additional pieces of pipe. We have standing bids for the bulk of the project, correct me if I'm wrong, Richard, but in order to get the project moving, we're going to have to rebid some value engineered pieces that would, may otherwise delay the project. And I believe Richard's talked with the developer and worked out a potential solution in that the city may enter into a public-private partnership with them to reimburse them for the pipe up to the amount we were originally budgeted for the project, which is the $97,321.80. There's a potential that that can be reduced by some value engineering, but that will be left up to, to the project developer on the matter. But instead of doing it this way, we enter into a contract with Portico Fairhope LLC and have basically a public-private partnership with them. They're going to, the city's going to reap benefits from this, what's about three times what we're putting into it.
Yes, sir.
Overall value of the project is, if I remember correctly. They're doing all the engineering, all the labor, all the installation. All we're doing basically, in the original proposal, was paying for the pipe to be delivered, paying for the pipe and having it delivered to site, and now all we're doing is just placing the money with them directly under that, under the partnership and contract with them.
How is that saving us money then?
Well, the only savings would be.
Or getting more for them. How are we getting more bang for the buck then?
Well, it's the same amount of money, what the benefit, the public purpose benefit to the city is, we're having a full-blown, and this is your, your expertise here, is a project, a drainage project, where we run from a two culvert to a one pipe now that runs from Fairhope Avenue north to the gully, and it'll expand that to a two-pipe system and eliminate flooding in that area. And it's a project that you may have had on your radar screen, I don't know, Richard, you have to expand with the council on that.
Yeah, and Council President, this is, this is one of those situations where we kept running afoul of public bid law issues because the pipe has already been advertised and bid, but part of the consideration was the junction boxes. But when you do the aggregate, you exceed $50,000. And even though it's really not our project, at the end of it, it's going to be our ownership. We're going to own the end results of that and have those improvements. And there is just, and even though we're not doing a project, Marcus, in abundance of cautions, has identified that it runs afoul of public bid because it really is a, it, there is a project out there that we're investing, if we're, if we're acquiring materials and services that exceeds $50,000, and it's just, it became problematic that if we had to stop everything that we have done and then put it together as a single advertised public works project, then we run afoul of the fact that we have a pre-placed bid for pipe, and if somebody else comes in at a lower price for the pipe in our pre-placed bid, we said, "If you bid on this, and you, we will order our concrete pipe from you for the period of time that pre-placed bid is in place." So at the end of the day, the recommendation is, is that all things being equal to solve the, the issue with the, with the bid law requirement, is that if a, an agreement is struck where there is a participation in dollars that are equivalent to us putting all these pieces together and delivering them on site, one, it removes us out of the procurement issue and the possible conflict with public bid law. It puts all of that on the developer, which he's agreeable to, and it just makes it cleaner, but we get the same end results. Now, the one thing on the junction boxes, we're going to, we're going to work with the developer to pursue the value engineering because he saves some money because right now the boxes in their current configuration are so large, he's going to have to bring a crane in. The actual box manufacturer who won this, this bid that we're going to probably ask you to toss out here next and just do nothing with, came back and said, "If we broke it into a series of double singular boxes that relate side by side, we can get your price down and get your weight down and make installation better." And I think that that would be my recommendation, is that if there is a cost savings, that we pursue that cost savings with, with the knowledge that if there is not, the maximum exposure we have is what you're agreeing to tonight. And I know that was a lot of explaining, but this is the, the first time I've been through this process, and we just want to make sure we, we cross the Ts and dot the Is. And Marcus has been absolutely phenomenal and has the patience of a saint.
Mr. McDowell, do you have that, we would have to amend the resolution?
Amend the resolution, and then the bids on number 11, you'd have to reject the bids that have been put in place. I got, you can't read my writing.
I sure can.
I've got it, I'd be glad to read it.
Okay, so counsel, he's going to read an amended resolution, so if you decide to go this route, we would need a motion, second, to vote on amending the resolution as, as it's been presented, as I read it. So, Mr. McDowell, can I ask you to read that resolution?
Yeah. Be resolved by the governing body of the City of Fairhope, that a valuable public purpose will be served by entering into a public-private partnership with Portico Fairhope LLC for drainage improvements on Fairhope Avenue. The city will reimburse up to $97,321.80 in material costs for certain concrete pipe and junction boxes. Certain value engineering materials may be utilized will lower the city's contribution. And at the end of the project, all rights of way and easement will be granted to the city. All labor, engineering, and other installation costs are to be carried by Portico Fairhope LLC, and the amount in question is budgeted for drainage improvements in the central business district. Counsel hereby authorizes the mayor to enter into a contract for services with Portico Fairhope LLC pursuant to this resolution.
I have a question for you. We would accept all the reliability for that pipe because I have people, I have residents, you know, call me, and they say, "Well, I had an official with the city come out, and they said that that drain that goes from the curb and goes under my yard and goes back to somewhere else and dumps out is not the city's responsibility if a sinkhole opens up in my yard. What happens on this? Do we accept the responsibility if we run a pipe all the way underneath this entire project and sinkhole open up, opens up there because of a leak in the pipe?"
And I discussed this with Mr. McDowell. Just so you know, as far as the history of this system, on the Fairhope side of things, back before we resurfaced Fairhope Avenue, which was approximately 2012, if going back and looking, we did a major repair on, on that side. And then after the flood event of 2014, on the, I think it's Stimson is the road that runs behind, parallel to Fairhope, we had a major repair there at the end of this system. So, you know, I, my position is, if we're working on both ends, the conduit that connects them is already ours. Now, what we're getting here is material that has a service life of 50 years, where it's been sized to, to, not only handle the, the current capacity, but for any increased capacity. I have, as your public works director, the person who's going to ultimately have to maintain it, I have, and the fact that we have the right to inspect and make sure that everything is installed correctly before we accept it, I feel comfortable with us that we already not only have the maintenance of responsibility of a system that has had systematic failures recorded over the last few years, but getting it completely upgraded and have the capacity to handle not only current but future flows, I think it's just a win there. And I have a comfort level that I don't like to give a hard guarantee, but I don't think this, this council or mayor or your current public works director is probably going to have to deal with any problems in this portion of the system in, in, in our time of service here.
I don't disagree with that, but even 50 years down the road, if the council comes back and say, "Well, they should have spent the extra money and routed that, you know, under earth instead of under this very expensive building."
Well, the good news is, is that it's not going to be under the building. There is actually, the development has a roadway that goes from Fairhope Avenue that connects to, and I.
It'll always be under a roadway?
So it's under a roadway. Now, it's probably an expensive roadway, but it's not a building.
It's a lot cheaper than tearing up a building.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, that makes me feel better. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Johnson or Mr. McDowell? I'll entertain a motion to amend the resolution as submitted by city attorney.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to amend the resolution as submitted by the city attorney. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of amending the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, I will now ask for a motion to pass the resolution as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Feel good about it? Yes, sir. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you, Mr. McDowell.
Thank you, counsel.
Item 11 is a resolution to award the bid for the Fairhope Avenue Drainage Improvement Precast Junction Boxes for the Public Works Department to Foley Products Company with a total cost of $38,297. Have I heard Mr. Johnson write, he is asking us to reject that bid.
That is correct.
Clerk, do we need to have a motion to reject the bid? That would amend that resolution to, instead of award the bid, to reject the bid.
That's correct.
Counsel, we can, I can entertain a motion to award the bid, or I can entertain a motion to amend the resolution to reject the bid.
I move, we make, I make a motion that we amend the resolution to reject the bid.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to reject the bid. Okay, any further discussion?
Can I vote on item 11?
Yes.
Yes, she said yes.
Yes, she said yes. Okay. All right. To amend the resolution, item 11, to reject the bid, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, now, to vote on the resolution to reject the bid, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to reject the bid for the drainage improvement project, or improvement for the precast junction boxes. Okay, any final discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor rejecting the bid, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number 12 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to purchase a rescue fire tools for the fire department. The tools are available for direct procurement through the Houston-Goweston Area Council Purchasing Cooperative Purchasing Cooperative Contract, therefore does not have to be let out for bid. This has already been nationally bid through the HGAC's bid process. The total cost is $41,149. Chief Ellis, you wanna speak to this?
Thank you, council president, mayor. These are essentially replacement tools for our jaws of life. The current set that we're using is 26 years old, I believe, and they're at the end of their life. And this would just upgrade, what we upgraded to today's standards for cars and such like, and things like that, so.
Okay. Any questions for Chief Ellis, counsel? I note it is budgeted, and this is about $3,000 under budget, so I will entertain a motion for this purchase.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the purchase, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, purchase is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service, Chief Ellis. Item 13 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to purchase an HVAC retrofit at the James P. Nick Center. Equipment is available for direct procurement through the U.S. Communities Buying Contract, therefore does not have to be let out for bid. It's already been nationally bid through the U.S. Communities Bid Process. Total cost is $166,002. The budget needs to be amended for this unbudgeted capital purchase. I believe if you have any questions, you can ask Mr. Johnson, or I will entertain a motion to purchase this HVAC.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. I understand the timeliness of this, and hopefully we just kinda get ahead of these in the future, and just, maybe that we wouldn't have saved a nickel, who knows, but I'd like to see some more, some more options if we, if we may. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, purchase is approved. Thank you, counsel. Item 14 is a resolution, Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute change order number one to bid number 007-18, multiple pier repairs project in amount of $56,603, and award the change order to Asphalt Services Incorporated. Mr. Johnson, can you explain that? I don't think we got to that in the agenda meeting, sorry.
Yes, sir, and I, you know, we had a work session where I did try to explain how we get here, but this is related to repairs from Nate. Again, a combination of several things. One, not doing the engineering to get the package out the door as soon as possible. A couple of lessons learned. One, in the bid price, we just asked for a unit cost per piles because we didn't know how many number of piles would have to be replaced until they got the barge out there, and of course, most of the piers, we could not get to the end to because there was no decking left. And another issue was, those that were working with me to oversee it, maybe took the opportunity to repair more than what was absolutely completely damaged, and this was a quantity job, so there was no, no change in actual work items, it was a magnitude change in quantity. And I do, I do have the final numbers here, but I hadn't finished working them up, but it, the number's gonna come in less than what is here, but we just need to leave this because I don't have, I have confirmed that we do have the final accounting on that, and so it's not as severe as it was expected to be, but I don't have the exact number to give you at this point in time.
So am I understanding this right? Our portion is the $7,075.38.
Yes, we will have a 12.5% participation, and the good news is, is with our walkthrough with FEMA, they were very pleased with the work and didn't have any issues with the quantity, so.
Excellent. Any questions for Mr. Johnson? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the change order.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 15 is a resolution authorizing Mayor Karen Wilson to inform and submit the municipal water pollution prevention program report for 2017 to the Department of Environmental Management. I'll entertain a motion for this resolution. Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Counsel, this is just some annual reporting that we have to do to the Department of Environmental Management. You'll be seeing this every year that you're a council member. Any questions about this? I have a motion and a second.
Yes, she did.
Okay, have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number 16 is a resolution that the Compensation and Job Classification Plan, along with the Grade Order Sheet, be amended and approved to add the job position of Special Projects Manager and the job description and pay, rate of pay for the same and amend the budget to fund this position and to defund the position of City Clerk's Assistant.
Council president?
Yes, sir.
I'd actually like to make a motion that we table this till the next meeting, to give us some time to look at this and give the Personnel Board time to look at also, give us a recommendation. Nobody's seen any of this.
Anybody have an issue with just tabling this? I don't, I don't think it's going to affect the employee in question here at all. It's not gonna have any change in their employment. I just, I tend to agree with Councilman Boone that we should follow the procedure and go through the steps for establishing a new job position and get a recommendation salary range from the Personnel Board. Does anybody else have a strong opinion about that?
Sounds good.
Okay. Do we need to just let it lay over? Do we have to have a formal bid, I mean, I'm sorry, a formal motion to table?
I would do a motion to table.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Boone, do I have a motion to table?
You have a motion. I made it a formal motion, give me a second.
A second? All right, we have a motion and a second to table the resolution, item 16. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of tabling the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, item 16 is tabled. Item 17 is reappointments to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, and those reappointments would be in the form of Christina Stankowski as first alternate member and Harry Kohler as second alternate, alternate member. The term shall end April 2021 for alternate members. I'll ask for our emotion to reappoint these nominees.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the reappointments, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, reappointments are approved. Item 18, let's see, we're going with option B, and do we need to amend the resolution? I think I'm gonna earn my pay tonight.
I don't think there needs to be amended, you just...
Okay, I'm gonna read 18B. This would be a request of the Community Development Director, Sherry Lee Botop, requesting permission to block the streets, and skip down to that section, second paragraph, Johnson Avenue from section to Bancroft, DeLamar Avenue, striking out Church Street from Fairhope Avenue to St. James and replacing that with Fairhope Avenue from section to Church Street on May the 4th, 2018 during the First Friday Art Walk and for the parking rodeo. I'll entertain a motion to pass that.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the request, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, request is granted, thank you, counsel. Item number 19, which was added to the agenda beginning of the meeting, this is a resolution that the city council authorizes limited waivers. Can I read that? Can we read it? No, I think, I'm just trying to get through this. Resolution that the city council authorizes limited waivers of the 10-day application submission, pre-production meeting requirements, deposits, and fees for two low-impact video and film productions to be shot in the City of Fairhope, one on April 30th to May 1st, the second on May 8th and 9th, 2018. Said projects are produced by Mary Productions South and Citizens Pictures. All other film permit requirements remain in full force. I will entertain a motion to, I know I've been working on that, I'll entertain a motion to pass this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes. Item 20, which was also added, is, I'll state this resolution since you don't have it in your book, you may have been, I think you all have been handed it, but for the public, says, whereas on the 9th day of April 2018, the City of Fairhope adopted resolution number 20, sorry, 3048-18, a resolution to approve the purchase of 10 laptop computers for the police department from the inter-local purchasing system buying group contract with a total cost of $10,109.50. And whereas the purchasing department has discovered that the TIPS buying group contract had expired and no longer available for SHI International Corporation, and that the National Intergovernmental Purchasing Alliance or the National IPA Contract has the needed equipment available for direct procurement. Now therefore, it being resolved by the governing body of the City of Fairhope that resolution number 3048-18 is hereby amended and now approves the purchase of 10 laptop computers for the police department, and the equipment is available for direct procurement through the National IPA Buying Group Contract, therefore does not have to be let out for bid. This has been nationally bid through the National IPA's bid process, the total cost is, remains $10,109.50. I will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, we are going to have to go into an executive session, but prior to that, we will have public participation. I will tell the members of the public that when we come back from executive session, I do not anticipate any action being taken at all by this council. There will be no motions passed, no business carried on, to my knowledge. So we will open up public participation now. So if you have anything else to bring forth before the council, if you'll come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Gary Gover. I live at 300 Lincoln Street. I just wanted to make a few comments about the Earth Day Mobile Bay Festival that we had this past weekend. That festival is produced with the substantial contributions of the City of Fairhope, the Sierra Club, and Earth Day Mobile Bay Incorporated. It's made possible by the spontaneous and voluntary initiatives taken by 80 regional sources that provided an exhibit for the festival. The overall character of the festival this year was delightful, rich, rewarding, amazing variety of exhibits. At the peak participation, about midday, we had 1,000 people an hour arriving to participate in the festival. So I think that it was very successful. It was so smooth, and I think, and I think that was a result of the planning and the contributions of the people that sponsored it. I'm looking forward to doing it again next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gover. Okay, seeing no one else, I will now close public participation. Counsel, I have a resolution to read. This was written by Attorney Marcus McDowell. It says, as City Attorney Marcus E. McDowell, I hereby request the Fairhope City Council go into executive session based on section 36-25A-783 to discuss pending litigation. City Attorney McDowell does hereby declare that the City Council of the City of Fairhope rise from regular city council meeting on Monday, April 23rd, 2018, to go into executive session. The City Council shall be in executive session for approximately one hour. At the end of the executive session, the City Council shall return to the City Council chambers to resume regular city council meeting. The time is, I'm gonna call it 7:12 PM. City Council exits the dais to go into executive session. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, counsel. Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, counsel.